Text, email and so on. Write your friends and tell them they can watch it live on Thursdays if they're missing out. Okay, so we have a packed evening and we're grateful to have Michael Cahn of the Salvation Army here. We're going to ask him to open us up in a word of prayer.
Let's pray. To God, we thank you because you are present to listen, to hear the concerns that resonate through this room this evening. We know that there are many, many concerns. There are some answers that, or questions that are not going to be answered. We pray to God that you reside over us, that you would give us peace of mind, assurance that you are present. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. And good evening, Michael Cahn. I am Dr. Claudia Fleming, the Executive Director of Age Concern. I'd like to honor or acknowledge today the presence of the Honorable Kim Wilson, the Minister of Health, other distinguished members of parliament, I've seen at least one, who have joined us from either sides of the House and those also in the Senate. We want to welcome our panelists, who we will introduce shortly. The Honorary Director of Age Concern, Mr. Charles Jeffers, who will be moderating the evening. We also want to acknowledge all of the board members, Directors of Age Concern, the tactical officers of the Ministry of Health, you, our Age Concern members, and members of the public, and the listening audience, and of course, our media partners. According to the World Health Organization, because progress towards universal health coverage involves a range of complex tactical challenges, it is easy to lose sight of the fact that moving toward a unified or a universal healthcare system is a political process, maybe we have a wrong side of that, that involves negotiation between different interest groups in society over the allocation of health benefits and who should pay for these benefits. Over recent decades, civil society organizations have frequently played a crucial role in representing the views of the poor and the vulnerable in these negotiations, pushing for a more equitable distribution of both the responsibility for funding the system and the benefits received. Civil society organizations have also played an important part in shaping our systems at the national level, increasing community involvement, which is important in critical decision-making, and creating accountability mechanisms. Age Concern Bermuda and its members are an important part of local civil society. And as a part of civil society in Bermuda, Age Concern believes that the discussion around the proposed plan is as equally important as its potential or eventual implementation. Citizens must know and understand the very significant step that our country is taking in addressing healthcare on the island. Citizens must also move into this process with their eyes wide open to the potential benefits that they may receive, but also to the potential unintended consequences that may adversely affect them. Tonight, we encourage all members in attendance, and all of you in attendance, to join us as we put on our listening ears to further discern for ourselves our healthcare future. Age Concern has done its best to include in our discussions persons from the medical insurance field, and insurance field, sorry, because they too have valuable information and they have valuable insight to share. In terms of the outcome of tonight, Age Concern will consider its next steps as an advocacy. Are we good? Okay. That was just a task to see if you're awake. So again, in terms of the outcome of tonight, Age Concern will consider its next steps as an advocacy group. It is likely that there will be further discussions facilitated by us if we determine that our members have a desire to have further opportunities to garner a basic understanding of the proposals that are taking place. The order of tonight's events are as follows. We'll have Minister Wilson join us to provide a 20-minute presentation or so of the Bermuda Health Plan. 10 to 20 minutes, 10 to 20 minutes. We asked her to sit for 10 so that you would have more time. If she needs more time, we will allow her that time. Minister Wilson will then join you in the audience to hear the views of our distinguished panel. The panel discussion will run for 20 to 30 minutes. Minister Wilson will be invited back to the stage, or to the desk here, to join the panelists to field your questions and the questions coming from the moderator. Finally, your questions will be directed to the panelists and we ask you to fill them out on the cards that have been provided. Now, tonight, the event will be moderated again by our Honorary Director, Charles Jeffers. Many of you will know Charles. He serves as an advocacy voice for the organization and its members and has an extensive history in insurance sales and community activism. Now, I would enjoy, ask Charles to join me, and he will continue to join in the discussions.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming. Good evening, everyone. One thing, it moderates what I can say. And, um, it's not done. And I find that in my older years, I'm not having a problem with keeping quiet. Our distinguished panel this evening, at my far left is Dr. Michael E. Zawinski, he's a spousable Bermudian. He is a Canadian-trained urologist who originates from a national healthcare system and is a member of the Bermuda Medical Doctors Association. Next to him is Dr. Henry Darling. He's the President of the Bermuda Medical Doctors Association. The BMDA describes its purpose as a membership organization created to support Bermuda's medical doctors as they work to provide quality care for Bermuda's residents. Next to him is Mrs. Anita Ferbert. She's a Bermuda-registered nurse. She's also a qualified nurse practitioner. She has 50 years of experience in community nursing in New York and Bermuda. Nurse Ferbert is also an integral part of Age Concern as a former education officer and currently she serves as a volunteer. The next here is Mr. Leon Bascom. He's the CEO of the Moongate Group, a supplemental insurance agent. The Moongate Group consists of local companies which are incorporated under the laws of Bermuda. The company was established on October 6, 2013, and its clients purchased non-regulated products and services. And finally, on our panel here, we have Dr. Ricky Breathwaite. He's the Acting CEO of the Bermuda Health Council. The Health Council was established by an act of Parliament in 2004, and the council's purpose is to regulate, coordinate, and enhance the delivery of health services. Let's give a round of applause for our panel. Just a few housekeeping things. Cell phones either on vibrate or off, please. If you find you have to use it, we're going to ask you that you go out so as not to disturb somebody who may be next to you and wanting to hear what's going on. We also, the bathrooms, you go out the door here, across the entrance, and then to the left. Oh, this is, can they get through this way? No, okay, all right, okay. Through the doors there, right across the reception area, and then to your left, you'll find bathrooms. As Dr. Fleming noted, that we're going to have the presentation by the minister first, and then we're going to have the panel answer questions, a few questions I have, but if you have questions, we ask that you write them on a card and raise your hand, and one of the Age Concern volunteers will come and pick it up. We've done it this way because we want to get as much done as we possibly can, and so we felt that having the questions written would then give us the extra time, because if everybody's like me, you want to say the extra word or two if you're standing in front of a mic. All right? Okay. Now, at the end of the, you will be given evaluation forms with questions, and we're asking that you complete those and turn them in before you leave. We need feedback. We need to know what we're doing, if we're doing things right, if we can, how we can improve, and we want to know if we're really serving the purpose for which we are here. I think that's about it as far as the housekeeping details. At this time, it's my pleasure and privilege to ask the Minister, the Honorable Kim Wilson, Minister of Health, if she will come and give us her address. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffers.
You will get them towards the end of the meeting. Okay, oh, and if you want, just a minute. The cards for the questions, okay, they'll pass them out to you. Yes, yes. Sorry about that.
My address is in Somerset. You asked me for my address. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jeffers and Dr. Fleming and Age Concern for allowing me to spend a few minutes this evening with you to discuss the Bermuda Health Plan as well as this public consultation process. I want to start by clarifying that my overarching aim in this entire process is to take steps to make sure that everyone in Bermuda can be healthier. And this can best be achieved by providing more prevention, greater access to healthcare for all, and providing a decent core plan of benefits to help to keep us healthy. It doesn't matter what your current state of health is and how old you are, whether you're young or old, we can all be healthier, and that is my ministry's mission. However, this is a very ambitious goal. There is no single act that can fix everything, no magic wands or super pills to cure all ills. Like all of the best things in life, it will take hard work, collaboration, and many different efforts to get Bermuda healthier. Having listened to the public, we know that amongst the things that we need are again more prevention, access to healthcare for all, and a decent, basic plan with benefits to keep us healthy. So among the things that we are doing to achieve this is the Bermuda Health Plan. The public consultation is asking two questions. One, what should be included in Bermuda's core health insurance plan? And two, how should we transition to a more efficient system? So why are we doing this? Because the structure of Bermuda's health system is not capable of taking care of all of our people anymore. It's broken. To be clear, we do have some exemplary strengths, but we also have some very major challenges. We are the third most expensive health system in the OECD, but we rank 13th in life expectancy. Health costs consume nearly 12% of our GDP. Three in four adults are either overweight or obese, and more than half of our adults have one or two chronic disease factors. More than one in 10 adults has diabetes, and of every healthcare dollar that we spend, 10 cents of that is spent on two preventable conditions, chronic kidney disease and diabetes. In order to get different results, we have to do things differently. So what are we doing about it? The Bermuda Health Plan wants to make sure that the core health insurance plan includes benefits to keep us healthy and to give people the protection that they need. We have heard the concerns of persons within our community who find it difficult to pay for their necessary medications, or persons who are unable to see their doctors if they are unable to afford the copays. We are trying to add benefits like prescriptions and more office visits to the plan, and this would make everyone's core coverage better without taking anything away. For example, Future Care will still cover $2,000 for prescriptions and could even go up to $2,400. And HIPAA could get some prescription benefits, which they don't have now, and better office visit coverages. In short, we are trying to add benefits to the core plan, which currently mainly covers hospitalization. Supplemental benefits in HIPAA and Future Care will actually be improved, and so should the benefits in the private plans. What is clear is that the Bermuda Health Plan will not take any benefits away. The Bermuda Health Plan reforms also aim to ensure that everyone is able to buy core coverage at an affordable price, and to do this, the government decided after lengthy consultation to use a single insurer to sell the core plan. Why? Because if the administration of the cost benefits comes under one insurer, it will make business costs and overheads less expensive. With those savings in our total healthcare spend, more monies can be applied towards important services like chronic disease management, more prevention, regulation of prescription drugs, and dispensing fees. The core plan will be cheaper in one large pool than split amongst thousands of pools as it currently is now, and it's just simply the law of big numbers. I've been quoted in yesterday's Daily as being, quote, "grateful" for the public feedback. It's very helpful, but in fact, I really am truly grateful for the public feedback. If I didn't want to hear it, I would not have undertaken this past four months of consultation and dialogue. We, as a government, are actively engaged and consulting. We have had over 50 consultation meetings with more than 600 participants. It is true, excuse me, it is a true and genuine act of listening, and we are hearing excellent feedback. We've heard from people that $400 for prescription drug coverage in the mock plan is too little. We've heard from allied health services like physiotherapy and occupational therapy that those need to also be included in the plan. We've heard that people want better coverage for primary care, but we have a long way to go before we are able to reach agreement with the physicians about how do we achieve this. And we have heard votes of thanks for proposing to extend the personal home care benefit to all eligible residents and not just HIPAA and Future Care members as it is now. We have also heard doctors and dentists' mobilization of the community to oppose the reforms, specifically to oppose the institution of a single-payer system. And we understand people's concerns. No one wants to see healthcare quality diminish or monstrous monopolies with no one can control. But neither of these things need to happen. Healthcare as a public good needs proper regulation to ensure everyone can access it, and adding benefits to the core plan will improve access. We have years of experience with the standard health benefit coverage, and no one has argued the quality is poor. We are certain that adding more community services to the standard health benefit will only improve quality as well as access. The four-month public consultation phase is nearly over as it ends on the 8th of December, and after this, working groups will be set up to consider the feedback from the public, and they will then make recommendations on how we should proceed. And I should note, all of the feedback during the public consultation will be made available to continue with the transparency that has gone on heretofore, and it will be consolidated and made available to the public. Nothing will be rushed, and decisions will be made in consultation with those stakeholders that are affected. The first step in the fall of 2020 may simply be something as adding prescription drugs to the standard health benefit. There will not be a sweeping overhaul of our healthcare in one failed swoop. We will make changes gradually, intentionally, and together for the benefit of all of Bermuda. And with that said, I look forward to further discussions this evening, and I'll just take my seat as instructed by the moderator. Thank you.
I would assume that some of you have cards already, that you've completed the questions. Great, okay. So the questions will be brought to me, but in the meantime, we're going to ask the panel a few of the questions that we have here. We're not going to address it to any specific person on the panel, but please indicate if any panel member wishes to answer. What is the most significant positive change coming from the proposed plan and why? And we want you to speak, panel, specifically to the needs of seniors. Who wishes to respond to that?
So I'd like to say good evening, everyone. Happy to be amongst you. What we've been doing at the Health Council is having a lot of these discussions amongst all kinds of groups. We've been talking about mental health care, we've been talking about long-term care, we've been talking about prescription drug coverage, and to say what is the most important thing takes a step back from the specifics about these components. The most significant part of the reforms that we're talking about is this whole concept of sharing. The unified model says, how can we as a society share the burden of the costs that we all bear amongst everyone? So specifically, within a unified model, within a single-payer system, those who are having a hard time, and this is specific to the reforms that we're talking about, those who are having a hard time with affording healthcare can have benefits that help them. So the Bermuda Health Plan is all about ensuring that we have a higher standard of the benefits that everyone, everyone has access to. The other part is those who already have adequate coverage will belong to a larger group of people so that if something happens, your premiums won't rise so dramatically. So if I were to cut this room in half and say, this side is in one group and that side is in another group, if one of the people on my right side, if something happens, if you have a stroke, everyone's premium on this side is going to rise a lot, whereas this side is not affected. If we include everyone in this room, what will happen if someone has a stroke on this side is that the cost of the premiums for everyone rises a little bit, but everyone has a part of the cost. Everyone bears a part of the cost. Remember that things like strokes aren't the result of just someone doing something bad, it's a result of a lot of things that happen, the stresses that we deal with. So a lot of this is, the biggest positive change I'm thinking about around a single-payer or unified model is how do we share the cost and how do we avoid these dramatic increases in the cost of healthcare when something bad happens?
Thank you. Good evening. In addition to what Mr. Breathwaite had said, one of the significant changes or positive changes that I see with regard to it, and specifically with regard to seniors, is that, you know, it's really designed so that more, you know, you have 75% of our population is basically overweight or obese, which is leading to some of these chronic conditions. And I believe that the design of the plan is to force the people to get to their practitioners earlier. So what will happen is that you would be able to go there, as opposed to wait until it's an acute situation and then we're going to the hospital, what happens is that you're able to go to your practitioner earlier, and hopefully they're able to do that through low copays and things of that nature. So specifically, when you're talking about, you know, how this plan can really help the seniors, it's really to encourage you, through the coverage that you would have, to see your practitioner earlier than to get into an acute situation.
Good evening. I also agree with the, the thing that I see that's very beneficial is the increased doctor visits, it says unlimited, and the copay is more manageable. I realize this, that many people don't go to the doctor as they should, or they're being monitored, and they don't always go because of copays. But with the increased levels of copay and coverage, that people can access their primary care physicians more readily, and that's a major part of some of the things that currently that's going on. It would be really nice for us to have a swap, a change, and think about prevention more, but that later on. I think I'll talk about some things that we did at Age Concern with our health checks that we found out, and that would eventually, as time goes on, that people will pay more attention to prevention rather than sick management.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you all for allowing us to come and participate in this. Physicians for a long time have been trying to advocate for our patients. I don't think there's any physician who has not heard, either somebody who has been classified as indigent, who has been over the age of 65, who has said that they have problems paying for their medication, who has problems paying for their copays. There have been several things that we have put out for years, since I've been back since 2002, that have been put out as a viable solution to help those who are in need. So this gives us another opportunity to say, listen, there are true ways of not only curbing the cost of healthcare, but getting seniors and those who are truly in debt the ability to pay for their healthcare. It is not a one-fix-all, because not one person has the same type of illness. We have to be able to change the system so that we can tailor-make it to our patients, otherwise what we will find is that we will just have the same problem we have now, that we'll just have the same limitations, but just for a different crowd, for a different type of insurance. So I'm looking forward to letting people voice their concerns tonight.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to speak here. I feel like I was able to sneak in by being on the panel tonight, which is good. I think that it's always important to make sure that everybody understands that the two, there are two major things that are, that are happening and being proposed at the same time. We were, we had, one of our panelists here was talking about the, the potential benefits in the mock plan that they're putting out, which is separate from the way that it would be administered, which is the unified system. So it's always important to understand that. I think one of the best benefits of the plan is that, you know, the universal access to healthcare that everybody, you know, would be able to have, and I think that, you know, you wouldn't find anyone that would be against that sort of thing. But the two aren't necessarily linked, you know, you can definitely achieve that in many ways. But that's, that's what I would say I would be excited for.
Thank you very much. We do have some questions. Someone is asking, where will the funds be drawn, how will they be drawn from for those who are not working, I guess, and have no insurance? There's a concern with how would we collect from them? Is there anybody who could answer that? I would assume.
That's all right. In the first instance, with respect, if I understand that question correctly, it's what happens to persons that are unable to pay?
They have no insurance and they're not.
Right, okay, fine, and they're not working, okay, right. In the first instance, we recognize that, obviously, the objective is to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to have access to healthcare, and this Bermuda Health Plan will provide that. However, if persons are unable to afford it, then they will still have the opportunity to make application for financial assistance to pay for the health coverage. However, moving forward, when we're able to start doing reforms with respect to the subsidies, then there will be those same persons that are requiring assistance to help pay for their medical insurance, then they will be subsidized. But we are looking to, that process is obviously down the line, but there will be no exclusions that will be either in the first instance in the short term, financial assistance will be made available for persons who are unable to pay for the insurance premium, and then secondly, in the long term, whilst we, once we've completed the reform with respect to the subsidies, then certain persons will perhaps be subsidized. Because what we don't want is to create a situation, obviously, where persons that are unable to afford it because of their own circumstances don't get help. I'm sure we all would agree that, you know, health is a universal human right, and the opportunity to have access to it is a right for everyone. And a person that is unable to afford it because of their own personal circumstances should not mean that they are disqualified from receiving the medical treatment that they require. they require.
Well, you can either jump up if you need to. No, sit there, okay. The next question we had was palliative care. The question was asked whether or not palliative care would be covered for those in need at the particular time. Will palliative care be provided for those in need when the time comes? Or if the time comes? Yes?
So I would take palliative care, and maybe I'll define it, and if you want to also add to the definition. So palliative care would be around pain management, end-of-life care, to keep individuals comfortable, end-of-life care, those kind of benefits. Yes?
Okay.
So, so in 2016, I believe, we added end-of-life palliative care to the standard health benefit. So again, the standard health benefit is the government mandated benefits that must be included in every insurance policy. Before 2016, palliative care, end-of-life care at home was not part of, was not a mandated part of health insurance. So what the government said at the time was, let's add this benefit because it's important to allow people to get care at home, for doctors to get paid to come to someone's home and provide care, for nurses to provide care for individuals as well. So that was included and added to the standard health benefit that currently exists. For the new Bermuda Health Plan, there is no intent to reduce the current set of benefits that are in standard health benefit, but actually just enhance them, which would also include, yes, directly to continue to have palliative care within their benefit plan.
Okay, thank you. Another question, what is the most concerning change coming from the proposed plan and why?
All right, I'll pick that up. You know, one of the things we've been hearing is that nothing is written in stone yet, that they are open to hear all things, but one of the things that we do hear over and over again, that they are going with a unified system. The unified system means that there will be one person or one organization that will be controlling the system. We remember when we had one telephone company that controlled our system. We remember when we had one system that did our internet. We remember how expensive those systems were, we remember what kind of, we had an all or none. Now we have options, now we have cheaper systems. We don't want to go backwards to when we have one organization that controls our system. We know that our government is overrun with a financial burden that is going to be difficult to pay off in our generation, let alone our children. We are concerned with our government taking another service on that is going to be pushed down generation after generation. It is already the hospital that they will not be able to pay off in any earlier time. And now they are taking on another system that they potentially will not be able to cover. We are concerned that this is not the way to go, that there are easier ways of being able to lower the price of health care without the government actually taking this on under their wing. Now whether they end up giving this service to another organization to run is a different thing than whether who ultimately controls this, because this will still be controlled by government. And I think that's very clear that we have to understand that, you know, there is a famous lawyer who once talked about the political illusion that we're under, that government can fix everything for us, and that, once again, just because our party is in, that we can sit back and relax, it doesn't matter what party is in, that governments do not fix things for us, that we have to fix things for ourselves. And health care is no different. You know, we heard earlier about how our obesity rate is seven out of 10, or 74%. We didn't hear how in the unified system in Canada, it's 64%. In the UK, it's 64%. They're not far behind, but their costs are going up and up and up. And the way that they deal with costs that are going up is they cut the services that they are providing to their health care, the services that they said they were going to give, that they take away. And if you don't think that this will happen in Bermuda, it has already happened. It has happened in two seniors, because there was a time that after you turn 65, that your subsidy covered at least 80%, and it was dropped to 70% at 2015, to help offset the extreme cost of the financial burden that our government was going through. Whether you knew it or not, it happened. So you pay one way or the other, our taxes pay one way or the other, and the government has to, and I'm not blaming them on others, there's not, this isn't a PLP or an OVA thing, this is, we need to find a better way of being able to curb our cost. We talk about services, but we don't truly talk about what the cost of the services is. We talk about copays, but the copay is a part of the price. If somebody wants to pay my VA bill and they're willing to pay 50%, it's great, but what about the other 50%? If it truly costs that amount, somebody's got to pay that bill. Otherwise, my lights go off. And instead of saying, right now, let's find a way to pay it, let's talk about how we can actually turn down the lights and use less of it. That's all we're saying.
So I'd like to also, so I agree, we probably need to get healthier as a population so we can use less, and everyone agrees on that. What the rhetoric is saying is that we're talking about Canada and the NHS. Reality is that every developed country, every high-income developed country has a single payer system, except the United States. The United States is the most expensive health care system in the world with poor results. And during multiple elections, what the rhetoric has said is, if we change to a single payer system, where we're going to have death panels, it's a lot of Republican rhetoric that has seeped into the rest of the world to talk about the horrors of every other country but a free market system. Free market systems in health care are all about maximizing the profit that insurance companies, that pharmaceutical companies, that physicians, and if you don't believe me, look at the United States. So what we're trying to do now is create a more fair system in Bermuda. It's not about trying to take away services, it's not trying to cut costs, it's about creating an opportunity and environment by which health is put first and foremost. Because if we do not put health first and foremost now, we will not have something to pass on to the next generation. Because what's going to happen, and not to blame anyone in this room, is but you have a large population that's going to continue to grow, and what the next generation is going to have to do unless we get ourselves healthier is bear the burden of those costs. So a single payer system, whether you believe that everyone else in the world is suffering within their health care system, I think would be disingenuous to say that everyone else in the world is suffering. I think there's a lot of examples of a lot of healthy people in other countries within their, so I just find the rhetoric to take only the bad parts of systems and apply them to this conversation, and it's not fair to you to only present one side of the equation.
Another question, and there's no way we're going to be able to get through all these questions tonight, and this is good, the fact that people are concerned and that people are filling out cards. However, I'm sure we're going to find a way to get the responses out through newsletters and through the internet and what have you. So, and of course, we just have to find a way to answer these. But a question that we have, and this is the crux of the whole matter, and we'd like to find out from our panelists, what is your ideal for the management of health care coverage in Bermuda and why? What do you feel is the ideal way to go?
So as a non-physician, I believe that the medical profession should provide the answer. What I will say, based on all the feedback that we receive at the Health Council from a system standpoint, we have a very fragmented system where people aren't working together. So that is probably the largest issue, because we can't just continue to find resources, we have to figure out ways to work better together. And hopefully, the divisive tone of the conversation leads to productive solutions, because ultimately we have to be able to work together.
I think that's a very difficult question to answer that requires a lot of thought, a lot of consultation, and a lot of thoughtful consultation with all members that it affects, the public, the people administering it, the insurance companies, the pharmacists, and everyone sitting in the same room and discussing it before decisions are made to go ahead with something, something that has not happened yet. I have the unique ability where I've come from Canada, I was under a unified system. I just went home to, for a little early Christmas visit, I went with my grandmother to have an orthopedic appointment. Took her eight months to have her appointment, and she needs a shoulder replacement, and it's going to take her 15 months where she's living in pain to have it done. And that's one system. And I sat there, I said, wow, you know, I am so happy to be able to deliver the health care that I do in Bermuda. And so is it Canada perfect? No. Is Bermuda perfect? No. Health care costs money, and where is that going to come from? In Canada, we have 40% income tax. In Bermuda, we don't have that. If we start to administer a lot of these things, well, there will be taxes, there will be taxes of one form or another. And what I find that's happening right now is the cart is before the horse. The decisions have been made to go ahead with things, but here we are in consultation, asking what it should include and how it's going to be done. To me, I feel like these are things that should be decided before we decide to do something as monumental as this. So to say, what's the best way to manage the health care system? Well, that is a good question, and that's why we're all here, and that's why I think we need to take more time and all sit down together, all the people involved, to figure it out.
We all understand that the, our lifestyles and things have brought us to this point of the number of obesity we have, and diabetes, and that, high blood pressure, and so on. My ideal would be to include, for the physicians' visits, for wellness professionals to be included, that people think of that first, along with when they're doing their well checkups, that they, you know, it doesn't have to be a physician's visit, they can be nurses, there can be other organizations that we haven't thought of. But we really do have to make a big switch to how we manage our health. Just taking an example, these things take a long time to notice what's the outcome. But I remember when they were doing the whole thing about schools, and I remember that they talked about healthy schools, and that they were promoting children drinking water instead of juices and things like that. And that has really made a change. It's taken 15 or 20 years, but children are thinking along those lines. And at least for the days that they're in school, they're having healthier, they're drinking water, they have fruit, they have to bring, they're not allowed to bring the Lunchables and that sort of thing. These are the things that really our generations, the generations before those children, have had other habits. And so we really do have to latch on to what would make a difference. And every society tells us that if people are healthier, then all of the hospitalizations and medications and all that would be reduced. So my, what my dream is, is that we can really encourage people and the whole community to latch on to healthy living, and that that begins right in the beginning, not, because we do have, the younger population is holding up a whole lot of other people who are sicker. And so we really do have to think about that. And I'm just thinking about prevention should be included as physician visits, and people can have that from whatever sources they get that.
Yeah, I just want to actually add to that, she actually took the words right out of my mouth. You know, we are very, we're a very sick population in terms of the numbers. The minister wasn't able to put numbers up on the screen, as was seen in some of the other presentations. Over the years, I knew that there's a particular slide that they have, and they showed the cost, the cost increase, which were, you know, astronomical in terms of millions and millions of dollars, I don't know if it was 700 million or some, 700 and something million dollars for 60,000 people, but don't even say 60,000 people, let's say 35,000 people who are really using the coverages. That's a significant amount of money for a small population. And what we need to do is become real with ourselves and say, we must do something about this. We can't, you know, sit back and say, well, you know, the doctors are going to fix it. And I actually disagree with you, I don't think it's the cart before the horse, I think, you know, that this is the time that we should be starting to address these things. And we should be, we have to remember that this is actually a consultation process. This is a, this is an opportunity for you to voice your opinion, and decisions do have to be made, just like any other person who's in charge, sometimes tough decisions have to be made. We put ourselves in this situation, where we're very sick. And so what they're trying to do is to, again, encourage the cost to come down by encouraging people to, again, see the physicians and see the doctors earlier in, earlier on in the process. And obviously, for the children, is being able to force a healthier lifestyle. So I certainly agree with the nurse here to say that this is something that certainly should be looked at.
All right, so what have we been thinking of? We've been thinking of medical savings accounts. That's where patients actually have money that's put aside in their own accounts, that they can use for medicines, for doctors' visits, that every month, that they decide what's used, not what the insurance companies, what the governments decide, that every month, whether you're working or whether the government is adding to it, that every month, if you decide you have to go to the urologist, or you decide that you have to get a CPAP, it's not a matter of whether they say they cover it or they don't, you have your own money that you make that decision. Whether you want to go to get acupuncture and it's not covered, that's your money to decide whether it has. That's something that was actually put forward, but it was rejected. We say bring that back and make that decision. Whether you decide that we keep future care, future care doesn't add a wellness visit. We've said for years, put a one-a-year wellness visit in it. Don't talk about how much it costs for a wellness visit. It costs cheaper to do a wellness visit once a year than to have that person have a heart attack that we couldn't catch because they didn't come in because you don't cover a wellness visit. We talk about, why don't you set up a localized clinic in the areas of where seniors live that we as physicians would, could man, once a week? We would be willing to come and man that once a week, so that you could come down, whether it's physicians, whether it's nurses, just so that you don't have to travel long distances. We are willing to work with you. It's not a matter of whether ideas are not there, and these don't cost a lot, in fact, they will cost less, because right now, 8% of your total health care is going to physician care. That is a lot less than every other one of those unified systems where they're paying 13, 26% in Ontario for a physician visit. And even though we complain about the US being very expensive, we send all of our overseas care to the US. So we cannot complain on one hand and then send all of our cases to the most expensive care, we can have it both ways. So either we're going to do it or we're not. We have physicians who are working to make it cheaper, but you have to actually send your money to the outside physicians, not the most expensive place with the hospital. Do you realize that your subsidies that are right now part of your taxes can be used for outside of the hospital, but it is a choice of governments, not just this government, governments to fund it only in the hospital? This is something that can be decided upon tomorrow, to say, we're going to subsidize our seniors for their health care in their local doctors' offices. It's part, it's written in your health insurance act, but it's something that has to be decided upon more so by people who know what you're going through than by what the numbers show on a piece of paper. So there are actual ways of bringing down the cost. And most importantly, you have to make taxes that are directed towards health care. You cannot keep general taxes that are just, this year decided upon, we'll direct it to there, and then next year... there, and then next year not, because then you never know how much taxes, I still don't know how much taxes are coming from sugar taxes, and I'll never know how much is going to whatever funding programs, if I don't know how much is made from it. If we direct taxes to senior care, then I'll know exactly what that taxes are every year and every year and every year. We have to start directing purposeful money to purposeful events.
Excuse me. We're not taking any questions from the audience, I'm sorry, we can't start, if we do, we'll be here all night. So I, we have to stand firm on that, all right?
So, so one of the reasons why Future Care hasn't been able, been able to expand their benefits is because anytime you expand benefits, you have to increase the price of the premiums. What has happened over time is a lot of the private insurers have dropped, once you hit sixty-five, they drop you off at the rolls, you end up in Future Care, Future Care tends to end up having, hip in Future Care, tend to end up having the highest risk or the sickest patients, and it's expensive. There's, there has to be a balance in Future Care on the cost of the premiums and the ability to provide benefits. One of the things that Standard Health Benefit has provided is saying to Future Care, you're going to have to provide these benefits that are mandated by law, regardless of the cost to you, because it's going to be beneficial to your patients. There have been many years when we've been, we've been, we've said to ourselves, we need to add benefits to Future Care, or add benefit, benefits to Standard Health Benefit, but the cost of doing so has been prohibitive. So we have to ask ourselves, do we want increases in premiums, or do we want to, to have the kind of benefits that would be helpful? The only other alternative is to share the cost amongst more people.
There's one question, Dr. Braithwaite, I think that you should answer, and that is, the question is about the proposed insurance fee. Some people have not yet read what it's, the proposed fee is going to be. Could you enlighten us on that?
So, so as part of the consultation process, what we did was create a mock benefit plan, so that it can start the discussion on what should and should not be included within the base benefit package. We also did this about a year ago, when we did a survey amongst the public and asked the public through a survey, what kind of benefits should be added within Standard Health Benefit. As part of the process of doing the mock benefit plans, that we can start discussion as part of consultation, we ascribed a price to it. So we looked at the population, took 2019 data, and said, what would it cost if we were to provide these specific benefits? The cost of those benefits which have been put out in public are five hundred and fourteen dollars for adults and a hundred and seventy-eight dollars for children. Again, this is part of a consultative process. Without a price, it would be hard to have a fulsome conversation. The price was added as well as example benefits, and that's part of the consultation process.
One of the things that I wanted to help to clarify, there are a number of people that come to our offices and ask a question as well, and I think there's a little bit of a miscommunication in terms of, so like, what the standard health benefit is and, and how it works. If you have a BFNM policy, for instance, and your BFNM policy is a thousand dollars, your BFNM policy already has the standard health benefit in there. So there are a lot of people that don't realize that what the government is doing is they're taking the standard health benefit, and they're expanding some of the benefits that are, that are within that. And so when you look at that thousand dollars, and for instance, right now it's priced at three eighty-eight, three fifty-five, sorry. So it's going from three fifty-five to the mock example of five hundred and fourteen. And some people will ask, well, why is the price increasing? Well, the reason why is because they're taking some of the, they're taking additional benefits, for instance, they spoke earlier about pharmaceutical coverage, and they're putting that pharmaceutical coverage, some pharmaceutical coverage in there, so they're putting all these little bits in there, in the standard health benefit. So if I was an employee, and again, I pay five hundred to my employer, the employer pays the other five hundred, the policy is a thousand dollars, whether it's Argus, Colonial, or BFNM, it doesn't matter. If it's a thousand dollars, and in my past life, what we, how we used to split it up is that you have a primary layer, and then you have an access layer. So when you look at it, and every time you look at your policy, you actually already have two policies, okay? So, you know, when you have that BFNM policy, you have that primary layer, which is the standard health benefit, and then you have the access layer, okay? So there are a lot of people that actually don't realize that, and it, and it's important to actually make that clarification. So that when the government is saying that we're taking the standard health benefit, and now we're making the Bermuda Health Plan, remember, that's your primary layer. So if you're asking questions in terms of why the coverage is going to be higher priced, it's because they're taking some low parts of the access layer, and they're putting some of these things in that primary layer. So it's important for me to make that clarification, because I know that comes up as well.
And I do think from a provider's standpoint, Dr. Shrimansky, Sharitsky can actually answer the, what it's like to be an approved provider for Standard Health Benefit. He has a practice that has benefits that are under the Standard Health Benefit, which are regulated by the government, and I think he can provide some insights into the concerns or benefits that those provide for patients who have access to his services, that would not have access to those services unless they were actually in Standard Health Benefit.
The SHB, as I said, is a primary, a primary layer that all insurance companies in Bermuda are mandated to have. So if someone does not have any insurance, they wouldn't have access to that, but anyone with any insurance would. And to further the point of having, you know, your primary and your secondary, you know, some of the concerns that I've had, and people that I've had discussions with is, you know, now with this primary layer, you know, moving to five hundred and fourteen dollars, or whatever it may be in the end, after the consultation process and all of the things that are going to be included, is what is that second layer going to cost? What are the other insurance, you know, to get your major medical, to get all of the things that you may need? What are these costs going to do to people that want more comprehensive insurance? And I think that's a big unknown, and, and something that could potentially have unintended consequences to be more expensive than, than what people are paying now. I can't say that with any certainty, but that's, those are questions that I have. But, you know, offering, you know, including things as a primary layer benefit is, is excellent. The SHB access for, for people with any insurance is great, but it is only a limited amount of things, so it doesn't include all the things that people need. And obviously, the more things you include, the more pricey things get, and then the age-old question comes, where is that money going to come from?
And it's also good to note that all the insurance companies have said no to some of these physicians, or some of the physicians, when they wanted to provide benefits, they have come to the Health Council and asked for Standard Health Benefit, because the insurance companies have said no to coverage, the Health Council has liaised with the ministry, the ministry has provided that under Standard Health Benefit, and that's how people get access to some of the services. It is not by happenstance that Standard Health Benefit actually allows additional access when the private insurers say no. So when we talk about the additional benefits to be added to the Bermuda Health Plan, we're talking about the same kind of process of adding benefits that some of these, some of the private insurers are saying no to you accessing, and adding them and saying, government mandates that you have to provide these protections to the public. These are not unreasonable kind of benefits that we're talking about. For example, if, if your, if your current insurer only provides you four visits to the doctor, the government steps in and says, that's not good enough, we have to add that so we can have better access. And it's not, it's not just urology, or diagnostic imaging, or home care, we're talking about benefits that are actually going to be helpful. There's an example of a, a young person who, their insurance company only provided them Standard Health Benefit now. That young person thought they were fully covered, they went overseas this past week, they ended up in ICU assuming that they had full coverage. Our complaint about SHB for years now has been, SHB by itself is not adequate and needs to be redesigned. The redesign now just comes with a different name, but it's the same intent that's been happening over the last years. This young person is now in the US at a hospital in ICU with a first week bill of seventy-three thousand dollars, because SHB does not cover overseas care. The Bermuda Health Plan will cover overseas medically necessary care, and that visit to the ICU is a medically necessary visit to the ICU. So these are the kind of conversations that we need to be having about what are the gaps in the system, and what is the Bermuda Health Plan, and whether we talk about a single payer system, because every single payer system is actually not the same. But the single payer system does have benefits and does have pros, of course, every system has cons. But when we talk about coverage, we need to realize that some people don't have access to coverage, and the government does have a role in stepping in and saying, we have to provide protections to the public.
This, this conversation is, these questions and these answers are certainly getting into depth. These are the questions that we've received. Did anybody bring their jammies?
No.
And their pillow and their favorite drinks, we'll be here all night. But we've come up with a couple of solutions, because we want to make sure that, that people's questions are answered and they feel comfortable, but it's not going to happen all tonight. What we're planning to do, number one, is Age Concern will put these questions on the government website to be answered by them. The, those Age Concern members, you can go to our website, and we're asking that we put the government website address on there. The questions will be sent by Age Concern, we'll plug the questions in, and then you can go to the website and get the answers. This is a huge thing, and there are people with many, many concerns, and we can tell by the number of people that are here tonight that there is definitely an interest in what should be happening.
We'll do one better than that, we'll make sure that we work with our media partners to get the answers out in the public domain, either through print or through our newsletters as well.
Okay. So in addition to the answers being on the government website, Age Concern will also answer the question, so our members will be able to go to the Age Concern website and get the responses. Now, this is going to take a little time, you can appreciate, because with these number of cards, and some having two, three, four, or five questions, and you know, there, there are no bad questions, if people don't know, they want to know. And so it's our job to try to make sure that people can get the responses. We, we certainly want to thank each of you that have come out this evening, to show your concern. We thank the panel for coming. We know that there are diverse opinions, and that's human nature, and there will be diverse opinions. In the final analysis, we have to make sure that we do all we can to make sure that, in our case, Age Concern members are getting the best deal possible. Just before we close, we're going to ask the panel members if they would have, just take a minute, a hot minute, to give a closing remark. If you see my hand go up, you know your minute's up. And so we can just go down the line here. We'll start with Dr. Sharitsky, yes.
Thank you, Charles. Well, I'd like to just first acknowledge that I think that all of your healthcare providers have the same goals, and that's to provide access timely care to everybody who needs it. And, you know, everything needs to evolve with the time, and change will be good when it's done with a good thought-out plan with good consultation. There are a lot of people that have put a lot of hard work into the Bermuda Health Plan and the government, and they have good intentions as well. But we need to really take the time to all, consider all the options, all the unintended consequences, to really think about what's best for Bermuda and its population.
Yes, and I just want to add that, you know, the physicians right now have had several different ways of being able to reach their population of patients. Some of them do have capitated models, some of them have fee-for-service, some of them have ability to pay as you goes, there's, there's myers of ways that physicians are working with their, their patients to make sure that they're getting the services that they need. But if you just limit it to one type of way that we will make this happen, you will have definitely unintended consequences that we will end up paying for. There's always going to be problems with the system, but we want to make sure that those problems are addressed in a wholesome fashion, and we don't want our, our whole island paying for unintended, unintended problems, because ultimately, the question becomes, what if we're wrong? If we're wrong about this, who's going to pay?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to express something that I've long been thinking about, and I'm really hoping that we will really put something in this plan, really to address what we know is a root problem, and that is health, and better health from the beginning, and that we change our, change our thinking on healthcare, that we, we have, we really do have a sick care model, and it would be much better if we can go to a healthcare model where people are well, and that we don't have all of the crises and things that we have, because we address the sick model.
Well, certainly from the insurance standpoint, you know, one thing that I certainly want to impart on you tonight is about the primary layer and that secondary layer, that is going to be so critically important for you to understand, because again, that first layer, that standard health benefit, that's being expanded, and what's going to happen when the decision comes out in terms of the level of coverage that's there, you're going to look at your second layer, secondary layer, and you're going to say, what am I getting for that secondary layer? That's what's going to happen. And so to answer the doctor in the end, his question, and, you know, anything that is uncertain, well, we're going to be fearful about uncertainty, that's a natural reaction. But what's going to happen is that each and every consumer is going to say, you know, I have this Bermuda Health Plan, which has, has these levels of coverages, and that secondary coverage that I can get from the other insurers, or you can get non-regulated things from Moongate, you know, of course. But the thing is, you know, you're going to question, you're going to say, well, if, if, if I have, if I have this in my primary layer, what am I getting for this? What's the value of it? And so that's why it's important for me to make that. Thank you.
So one of the, one of the good things about working at the Health Council is forty, forty-plus hours every single week, we work in healthcare, and we're, we're looking at the healthcare system. Sometimes we're actually disappointed with the engagement of the public on healthcare issues. But this conversation that has been taking place in the public through consultation forums, it actually has produced a lot of engagement and a lot of questions that weren't asked before. And I think it's probably the most important thing that has come out of this, is that everyone seems engaged in the discussion around healthcare, which hasn't always been the case. So I want to applaud you for actually participating in these conversations, being engaged, because health is the most important thing that we have as, as a country. So I just want to applaud you as public for coming out to these conversations, and let's continue to be engaged, and turn that engagement into actually improving our behaviors and improving the way that we eat and all those kinds of things. So thank you very much.
At this time, I'd like the Minister to come and just give a few closing remarks, and then our Executive Director, Dr. Fleming, will give the final word for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. I just want to actually echo what Dr. Braithwaite just said, the engagement that has happened through these last four months of consultation, and particularly the last several weeks, has been tremendous, and I think it's really important, because obviously, each and every one of us are impacted by our health, and for us to continue the dialogue, the conversations will continue. The first part of the consultation, like I said, the public consultation ends on the eighth, but there will be working groups that will continue to work with stakeholders to help to set the course as it relates to how do we transition. to help to set the course as it relates to how do we transition from the existing met model to the unified model as well as what the core plan will look like. And I just want to also add that the only decision that has been made by the government this far is with respect to the unified. What's in the core plan, how much it will cost? None of the, no decisions have been made because that's what the working group would do. And in order to get to the unified decision, a committee was established, the Financing Reform Task Group, in 20, uh, 2012. And they worked for a year. If you go on our webpage, you'll see the composition of the committee, which was persons from the medical field, persons from international businesses. It was a bipartisan committee. They worked for over a year looking at other models and other jurisdictions to see what would best fit Bermuda's need based on size as well as ensuring that it covered accessibility and the other criterias of making sure that, um, it was sustainable and affordable and that everyone could have access. They came up with two, uh, they came up with two particular suggestions, the dual and the unified. We then had another consultation group that met last year. Again, bipartisan, uh, representation from the medical community, NPOs, employers, unions, et cetera. They reviewed it, went back to their constituency body and then the government made the decision of unified, announced it in August. This has not been rushed. It's been many years in progress, starting from 2012. So again, I thank you all, thank you for the invitation and thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, and these conversations will continue. Good night.
Thank you. Just a reminder about the evaluation sheets. Please complete them and, and there'll be someone there to collect them as you, as you go out. Okay. Oh, okay, we can, yes, we can have them at the door. Yes, yes.
We also have, um, uh, fact sheets from the ministry that we will administer. I want to thank you. This is a, this is probably a record for us. We have so many different types of people in the audience. We have, uh, people in the house, upper and lower. We have everyday working people. We have our members, we have lawyers, we have doctors, we have caregivers. This is an important topic and you have, uh, demonstrated to us that it is. Um, so I want to thank you for being a part of it. These questions that we have, it was very difficult to decide how we were going to do this in a fair manner. And, um, you know, with due respect to the minister, we, we asked her to sit the audience and listen. That wasn't an easy thing to do, but she has done it tonight to give, um, you an opportunity to hear some other voices in the room. And we, uh, want you to know that we're not going to, uh, let this be the only opportunity. If she will, we'll ask her to come back and have another discussion and perhaps expound upon these questions. We'll also be sure to get these questions out back to you so you understand what the answers are. Thank you so much for your patience for those who are watching live on Varnus and you got turned away. We're very sorry that you have, but we hope, uh, we thank Varnus and all our media partners for covering the event. Please fill in the evaluation forms, take the refreshments. We're not taking them home before you, uh, go out of the door. And, um, continue to stay healthy and concerned about your health. Thank you so much.